To start out, I can just tell you, a lot of work has been done in this arena. And tonight, to be able to really kind of understand the story and where we're at, I'm really excited. So with that being said, I'm going to turn the program over to our Planning Director, Heather Richards, that is going to lead, well, do a presentation, and then we're going to have a discussion regarding the buildable land inventories and the housing needs assessment. So Heather, and you've got part of your staff here, you might, and we've got some of the Planning Commission, we've got some from the county. I guess what I'll do is let's, let's, we know, we know us on the dais, let's just start over here and introduce ourselves, and we've got live mics at each of the tables. Christian Burnish, County Council.
Ken Bruni, Yamhill County Planning Director.
Okay.
Heather Richards, Planning Director. We also have Amanda Perrin and Sue Dirks, who are on the Planning Commission, and Gary Ling and Walter, and they also participated in the Citizen Advisory Committee for this project.
Absolutely. Okay, Tom? Tom Shauer, Senior Planner.
Chuck Darnell, Senior Planner.
Melissa Grace, City Recorder.
Thank you all. So I'm going to turn the time over to Heather, and she has a presentation for us.
Yeah, so good evening, thank you everyone for spending some time with us, and it's exciting to see a joint meeting of the Commissioners and City Council, my first one since being here, so I appreciate it. Wanted to take some time, and this will be, I anticipate about an hour and a half discussion to two hours, so just putting that on the table, to talk about some of the planning that's going on in McMinnville relative to growth and growth expansion, and this is something that's a partnership between the county and the city, so we wanted to make sure that everyone's sort of tracking along at the different milestones and learning the same information together. To start off with, we gave you all a placard in front of you, this is sort of my number tickler, I think of it as the Wall Street tickler, so this is how many people that we are going to grow to in 2041, per the state of Oregon, how many people we're going to grow to in 2067, per the state of Oregon, and what that means in terms of new people and new homes. And that's what we're talking about tonight, is how to accommodate that type of growth. I think as we have these conversations, sometimes we lose track of that. And then, to illustrate it even further, we have provided illustrations of what all those new homes look like in terms of quantity. I've sat in on some meetings where we've talked about how to solve the growth problems in McMinnville relative to bringing new homes online, and we've spent a lot of time talking about ADUs, and in my head, I was always thinking to myself, you know, six to 12 units is not going to solve the overall comprehensive problem. So I thought if we illustrated it for you to see just how many, each jelly bean represents a new home, each home is relative to two and a half people, so that's our future growth right there. We do have it divided for you in the terms of the different gap years, so the first little one is 581 new homes over the next three years, the next one is for a little over 1,000 new homes from 2021 to 2026, then we have about 2,200 new homes from 2021 to 2031, and 4,500 new homes are in the big bucket for, to get us to 2041. The 500 homes gets added to the other three, so when we talk about new homes to 2026, we take that little one and put it on top, and that just shows us aggregate how many new homes we're actually talking about as we go. And yes, we did count out all of those individually as a team, to ensure that we were representing this accurately. So anyways, planning for growth, I often use this slide because this is kind of the reaction I get when we talk about growth in McMinnville over the last couple of years, and I'm hoping that here very soon, we can change this slide to people who have faces that are excited about the discussion, rather than fearful and not looking forward to it. So first and foremost, for me, planning for growth is all about planning for people. Sometimes when we start talking about it relative to the Oregon land use system and all the different things that we have to satisfy through the statutes and the administrative rules, we lose fact of the, lose sight of the fact that we're talking about people, and planning communities for people, and the growth in those communities, and we're talking about how they're going to live and work in the future here. Secondly, it is more impactful than just 20 years, so by Oregon state law, we have to plan for 20 years' worth of growth, we can plan up to 50 years' worth of growth, but really, if you think about it, the built environment that we're talking about, once it hits the ground, it's going to last at least 100 years. So it's not just what's going to happen in the next 20 years, we have to be really thoughtful because what we plan for in the next 20 years is going to be in this community for at least the next 100, 150 years. So we calculate that to be about five generations, your great, 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 great grandchildren are what we're really thinking about as we do this. Third, it's required by state law, so we need to do this. And it's required by state law for very good reasons. Great communities don't happen by chance, they're very strategic, they're very deliberate, they're very intentional. Fourth, it's all about balance, it's balancing priorities, it's balancing different agendas, it's balancing near-term needs and long-term opportunities, and it's balancing aspirational goals and cautiousness. So that's why having an open, active community dialogue, you can usually bring all that balance into the discussion because people are pushing against each other when they're sitting on different realms of that. When it's out of balance, it's unfairly weighted in one direction, and to me, in some regards, here in McMinnville, we're out of balance right now. So this is about McMinnville's future, the decision-making filter should be about what's best for McMinnville, both current and future residents. A lot of times when we sit in these meetings, we'll have people worried about how we're meeting state laws, is this going to be legal, is it going to pass the test? We all worry about that as staff, and the Oregon state laws will make sure that we have the checks and balances for the state land use goals, but we really want people to be thinking in their head, what's best for McMinnville residents in terms of current and the future, and then local decisions really need to be filtered through that, through that local lens. As we're making decisions, we should be thinking about how does this impact our community, and not necessarily what does this look like at the state level. So today's discussion, we're going to talk about how McMinnville's going to accommodate 12,731, 39 new people by 2041. Some of these numbers may change because we've been, actually, these numbers won't change because this is coming from the state, so the Portland State University does a coordinated population forecast, it is not something we can challenge, it is our direction in terms of how we plan for growth, so this is our charge. And then 28,045 new people by 2067. That equates into, these are the numbers that might change based on decisions we make, but that equates into about 5,002 new homes by 2041, and 11,012 new homes by 2067. To put this in perspective for you, by 2041, we'll be adding a city the size of Cornelius or Gaston, and by 2067, we'll be adding a city the size of Redmond or Tewallatin to the city of McMinnville. So what we want to do today is review the history of the growth discussion in McMinnville, review the draft buildable lands inventory, review the draft housing needs analysis, review the draft housing strategy, and then discuss next steps. I will every once in a while put that tickler up there about what we're striving to do, just to remind us all as we go through some of the wonky stuff, that this is really our targets in the sand in terms of what we need to be talking about and achieving. And I have a lot of slides, so I would encourage you that if you have questions, Mayor, if you're comfortable with this, if there are questions that we ask them as we go, it might break it up a little bit as well. So I'm not going to go through the standard UGB process, I'm going to assume most people understand it. It is essentially what we're doing as a city is we're identifying how much land we have in the city to accommodate this future growth, we're identifying what our needs are for that, for those future people in terms of living and working, and how much land that need requires, and then we're matching the two. And if we don't have enough land in the city to meet the future need, then we're talking about an expansion of the UGB. In terms of McMinnville's UGB history, the last time we adopted a substantial UGB amendment was in 1981. In the state of Oregon, you adopt UGBs for a 20-year planning period, so in 1981, it was adopted for a 20-year planning period of 1980 to 2000, and that's our existing UGB. Since then, we've been working on amending that, so we have to constantly, as a city, be updating that, assuming that we've reached that threshold in 2000, and we should be thinking about 2020, 2040, those types of things. So in 1993, the city staff started doing the analysis and work again to prep for 2021. And through that process, there were several appeals, there were several times when it went into the court system, and they eventually amended the 2000 to 2020 to a 2003 to 2023 planning period, submitted that to the state, that got appealed, went into the court system, and then in 2013, the city decided to step away from the project for a while. So that's a 20-year effort to work on a 20-year planning period.
Heather, might it be appropriate during that period of time, we've, we went to the plate, how much did that cost the city in real dollars?
I'm going to have that for you, but it costs about $1 million, in hard dollars, that effort, that I can calculate. So the results of that effort was, we conducted the analysis for that 20, for that 2003-2023 planning period. Based on that analysis, we concluded a need to expand the UGB by 1,188 gross acres, which equated to 890 buildable acres. Of that, 537 of those buildable acres were identified to meet new housing needs for population growth. In 2011, the court allowed us to bring in 217 acres of rural residential exception lands, and that was it, into our UGB. And we'll talk about what those rural residential exception lands are. The court stated that the city had not justified the selection of high-value farmland over other exception lands adjacent to the existing UGB, so we weren't allowed to bring any other lands in, and that is still an issue today, so that's something we have to work through and talk about. So the results of that is, the city was left in a deficit of 673 acres that they had identified, buildable acres, and 320 of those acres were residential land. So that was for a planning period of 2023 that we are five years away from right now. And we are sitting in the hole at 320 acres already. And that costs $1 million, in hard dollars, in terms of money out the door for consultants and legal fees, and thousands of hours of staff time. And that's actually, to put it in perspective, Ben, who just went through this process, spent $6 million on their urban growth boundary expansion effort in hard dollars, and I don't know how much staff time, but I know they hired up about five new people just to do that effort there. So it's, it's tough, and it's expensive for communities to go through this. So in, to walk you through some of the lands that were brought in, the 217 total buildable residential acres are identified up there in green, and they are areas one, two, and four. Three is the new McMinnville High School site, that also came in through the UGB process. All the pink areas are the areas that the city sent to the state in addition to the green areas for the UGB amendment that were not supported, and the yellow is what is in the UGB. And what that looks like in terms of zoning, if you look at this, red is the city limits, and the black line is the UGB, and then anything in a color outside of the salmon color is zoning that is not EFU zoning, if I got that right, Ken, I hope so. What it means is, those lands that are not salmon-colored are more than likely the exception land, so those are lands that are not considered the priority farmlands, and when you're going through a growth process, cities have to bring those lands in first before they look at high-value agricultural land. We'll walk through what that means because those lands already have improvements on them, and typically are not being farmed, so they're being used.
About how many acres are there in the yellow?
That are in the county, or that are in the UGB?
That are outside of the UGB in the county, but they're the exception lands?
I don't know, do you know? I've been nervous to look at that because of the numbers we're coming up with in terms of our buildable acres that we need, and what we're going to need to expand into.
It says 285 in here, in the staff report?
No, 285, that's what's in the city's UGB, so the question is, the ones that's not in the UGB, right? We can get that, that'll be our next step, we'll get that answer. So this is the UGB today, so it's very similar to what you just saw that we brought in in 2011, it has not annexed and come into the city and been built out since then, eight years later, remembering that our planning period is to 2023. And there's reasons for that. Some of the land that's still in the UGB, I circled up there because I wanted to identify, it wasn't part of that initial UGB effort, it's still in our UGB, but as we go through this, you're going to see there's reasons why that's not developed either, nor has it been annexed into the city. Most of that is floodplain or in conservation easement, so it's not really buildable, or it is property owners that have no interest in actually developing their property. And this shows an area of how the city has developed, so, you know, from this perspective, from Oregon land use, it has built from the center out, there aren't a lot of islands of greenfield development that are surrounded by urban development, most of the land that's still available to develop is on the periphery of the city. So in terms of UGB amendments since 1986, we have had 371 acres in total, 217 of those were for that rural exception land from 2011, that UGB effort. The other ones were singular amendments mostly for public amenities, so that new high school in Joe Dancer Park, and then the Evergreen Campus. In that same time, the population has grown from 15,460 people to 33,810 people, that's an increase of more than 225%, the UGB has increased by 6%. So we've done a great job in terms of efficiencies and absorbing growth, but we're getting very tight. So land supply is now constrained, we have all these people who want to get into the city, and we don't have places for them to go. We have higher land costs, we have a lack of affordable housing opportunities, we have lack of overall housing opportunities, no longer is it just affordable, we have it across all income spectrums, we have loss of economic opportunities, so businesses looking for places to land in McMinnville and not being able to find sites, we have a falsely constrained population growth, so we'll walk through that a little bit, but the coordinated population forecast is all based on past trends. If you can't actually grow as a community over a substantial period of time, and again, our last UGB was in 1981, then you're not, your trend is trending downward in terms of population growth. Interestingly, there's more population growth occurring in the unincorporated county, which is the opposite of what we want to see happen, than in McMinnville, the county seat. We have a deficit in tax revenue at this point in time in terms of funding our public level of service, so we're not able to keep up with the cost of goods based on the tax base, because new construction makes up a gap formula in there. We're doing infill in a vacuum, so we're picking up these strange awkward sites and doing our best to develop those and do them in a thoughtful way, but they're, you know, some of it's awkward in terms of it coming in. There's pressure to efficiently use land, so make near-term reactionary decisions about, that will have long-term impact. We don't have anywhere else for this to go, let's just allow it to go here. And then there's a certain paralysis, people are nervous about having the discussion about growth in McMinnville.
Heather, question, and it's just a clarifying for me in my mind, when we talk about more population growth in the unincorporated county than within the city, could that be seen as a bit of sprawl when it's all over outside, and that's one of the things that Oregon land use wants to curtail, is the sprawl and keep it more contained?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know where it's occurred, and Ken and I haven't had that discussion yet, we haven't had time to dive into that, but I'll go through some of the, in terms of the coordinated population forecast, I'll show you what's happening right now, and we're flipped in terms of what our charges are for absorbing growth. The county's absorbing three times as much as its charge, we're absorbing a third of what we're charged to absorb. And that's, that's, you know, from an Oregon land use perspective, cities are where growth should occur, that's where the urban density can accommodate them, and you create efficiencies to protect farm and forest land. In terms of affordable housing, this is a tough map to see, but a darker color means that people are living in higher cost burden situations. In Yamhill County, most of that is occurring in your cities and not in the county. The median household income in McMinnville is about $55,000, the median listed home price, this was last year, so it's gone up a little bit, $377,000, median price of homes sold was $317,000, and those are your average rent, so our income is not supporting the household costs. This shows median sales price for a single-family and two, single-family housing unit in 2018, Newburgh has the highest, then the county, and then McMinnville, but McMinnville's is $349,000. So that in and of itself has raised from last year, which was $317,000, from 2017, excuse me. This shows, the median sales price has gone up over six years between Dallas, McMinnville, and Newburgh. McMinnville is the gold line in the middle. What's interesting here is where we started and where we ended in six years. So in terms of McMinnville, where we started was 140,600 in 2012, and it increased to 349,000 in 2018. That's a $208,000 increase, about 148%. This shows what people can afford based on their incomes, and if you look at this, the median house sold in McMinnville was $349,000, that sits right there in the 120% of area median income. So our median household is, people are paying more than they can afford for housing. We have 41% of our population is in that greater than 120% of median household income, and 60% is below that. So what that means is, the other thing that's occurring is, in terms of house, home supply, we have been operating in a deficit of new housing supply for about 10 years, so we've been issuing single-family dwelling permits at 100 dwelling permits or less over, from about 2008 to 2018, which put us in what we think a 600 to 1,000 home deficit. So we used to average about 200 single-family dwelling permits per year from the period of 1990 to 2005, so a 15-year trend, that's a fairly significant trend. So because of housing supply being limited, you have people in higher incomes who are buying homes that would typically be bought by a middle class because there isn't enough of the larger income homes for them, they're shifting the middle class down, they're picking up the lower-end homes, and so you're ending up with a group of people at the end who have no homes to buy because they can't afford it. It's displacing the market. To your point, Mayor, here's some of the stats for that, so this comes out of the coordinated population forecast. AAGR means average annual growth rate. From 2010 to 2015, McMinnville's average annual growth rate was 0.5%, and the unincorporated area was 1.9%. What's interesting is it kind of flips. So from 2000 to 2010, McMinnville's was 1.9%, and the unincorporated area was 0.4%, and then the next five years, we were 0.5%, and the unincorporated area was 1.9%. In the last two years, we have trended at 0.4%, which is our lowest growth rate that we've experienced as a city. So that gets to that funnel image of, we're, the funnel is so constrained that we're preventing growth from occurring. But population is growing, it's just growing more slowly now in recent years. From 1990 to 2017, McMinnville gained 15,771 people, so it nearly doubled in size, that percent change was about 88%, and our average annual growth rate over that time period from 1990 to 2017 was 2.4%, but in the last 10 years, it's been 0.5 or less. So the growth all occurred earlier. This is the coordinated population forecast for the whole county in terms of the different cities, McMinnville's is highlighted there that shows what our charge is, and we're meant to be growing right now at a rate of 1.4%, but like I said, we've grown the last two years at 0.4%, so we're already behind on our coordinated population forecast. We were not at 34,9293 last year. What this means for funding is the tax-based funds, you know, the general fund services, you guys all know that, the cost of goods there in terms of cost of those services is hovering anywhere between 5 and 7%, depending on what's happening in the market with health insurance and PERS, this is mostly labor cost. And with tax reform, property tax revenue, your tax base stays at a rising cost, a rising revenue base of 3%, and then it's meant that the gap would be picked up by new growth. But if you don't have new growth coming in, you're not even picking up the gap to serve your existing level of service. So in many communities where this is happening in Oregon, they're either reducing their existing level of service, and their communities are, those services are deteriorating, and we have some of those in Oregon, or they're quite frankly gentrifying, and they're just adding more and more tax levies to be able to fund the service and pricing out the people who can, who can no longer afford to live there, and we have communities where that's occurring as well. So we need to do something, and we realize that, and City Council gave us the go-ahead to try again, and that's where we're at. So in the past year, we have been working on a buildable lands inventory again, updating all of that, we've been working on a housing needs analysis and a housing strategy, and we are, which are all done, and we'll talk about that tonight, and then we're working on an urbanization study and an economic opportunities analysis. The urbanization study will look at land need for public facilities, parks, schools, all these sort of value-added amenities, and the economic opportunity analysis will look at employment lands. We're going to go over the different products themselves, now you've all received those in advance, and I hope you enjoyed reading them. A lot of data in there, that's all Tom's work, if you have any questions, ask him.
I was going through it, and then I looked up at the top to see how many pages, and I was like, I need to move faster. So thank you, Tom.
This was light reading for council from us recently.
That's what I've heard.
The executive summary on that portion is coming with the urbanization study, it's lagging behind unfortunately. Once that whole study's done, we'll summarize that for you.
So the draft residential buildable lands inventory, this is the first step, it's identifying how much land is available within the existing city limits and the urban growth boundary for development, keeping in mind that the definition of buildable is determined mostly by Oregon state law and not ourselves. So what we do is we scrub all the land in the city, and then we're allowed to assign development constraints per Oregon state law, which are regulated wetlands, so those are, in McMinnville, we just had a long discussion about wetlands, those are wetlands that are identified on the state and federal inventory. Those are wetlands that are identified on the state and federal inventory. We can exempt floodways, the 100-year floodplain, any land that's on steep slopes greater than 25%. Anything that has significant service constraints associated with it or easement constraints. So we did that in terms of the city and looked over all the land, and this is a map illustrating that, taking out the wetlands and the floodplains. And if you notice, up in the corner there, that's the land that's still in the UGB and not in the city. Most of it is floodplain or in a conservation easement. We do have a little bit that's just surrounded by the conservation easement that's vacant that we would have to run services to. That was great planning. And then we have a section of land, so we have to sort of put a flag in the sand as to when we're gonna do the scrub of analysis. And so we did that about a year ago, and we have areas in the community that are currently under development that will show up here as vacant, because at the time when we put the flag in the sand, they were vacant. These jelly beans are representing new development going on those, though. So the flag in the sand was for everything. We stopped counting the homes as well at the same time. In terms of some service constraints, we have slope issues in the West Hills for the slopes that are over 25%. We do locally in McMinnville have a steep slope code where we worked with our fire department. They struggle to be able to provide emergency response up slopes of 15% or more in a timely manner. So any, any homes built over a, built beyond a road that's 15% or more will need to be sprinkled. That's a code that we have here. And this shows where that sits in the city. All the pink is, everything that's greater than 15% in the, the mauve colors, over 25%, which is mostly outside the city. But you can see the West Hills has a lot of slopes that are over 15%. So most of that area will need to be sprinkled in terms of the homes. However, we have a problem because we don't have water serving those areas. So in McMinnville, we have two zones for our water service, Zone 1 and Zone 2. Zone 2 is not, doesn't not have the infrastructure to support it at this time. It needs a new water reservoir and the piping system to support it, so it does not exist in terms of service. And, and so we're not able to build the homes in Zone 2 at this time. Mack Water and Light does not have a capital improvement program that's funded through a system development charges. So they're not collecting money to fund the infrastructure for this development, for the Zone 2. And so it's, from their perspective, the developer needs to build it. It's about an $8 million investment based on the number of homes that are in the city that would be built in Zone 2. We anticipate that would probably put about $25,000 to $50,000 on each home. So right now, it's not financially feasible. We are working with the developers in Mack Water and Light to see if we can come up with a program that would be financially feasible, to make, that makes sense, so we can move those lands forward and get them developed, but they're in a holding pattern. The other thing occurring in the West Hills is we do have, the Department of Geography and Minerals has been mapping the area and has identified potential high landslide susceptibility. We have had one landslide that occurred there that affected some homes. And so we want to study that a little bit further, and what does that mean in terms of development as well. The other things we looked at in McMinnville is potential infill. So those of you who live on a lot that's greater than a half an acre, we expect you to add another home to that lot. And I know some of you--
You're not talking to me, right?
What's that?
You're not talking to me.
Only in the city.
Good clarification.
There are, I will tell you, both on our committee and in our leadership, there are people who live on those lots, so. Interestingly, this is where I can use my pointer, point some things out. I'll try to use this. So, let's see, I can't see this map as well, but right over here is a little neighborhood that's nestled north of downtown and by the high school. Those are all the larger lots. And at one point in time, I had a resident, I've been in McMinnville for three years, so this is recent discussion, a resident approached me about how do I put covenants in place so that no one can partition or subdivide these properties? So the, and I'm sharing these things with you, to share with you, that we have to put those jelly beans on land that's difficult to develop. We have a lot of constraints occurring. We also, another potential for residential infill is lots in multifamily zones that only have single-family dwellings. And we have a lot of that north and south of the downtown area. They're actually historic neighborhoods with historic homes on them, and we have several lots that could, you know, take multifamily development. I can tell you, in fact, this was in the paper just recently, so the south of downtown neighborhood forms so that they could prevent multi-identity development from occurring in that neighborhood. Casey and I met at one of those meetings a couple of years ago.
She wowed me there, I just want to say. You handled them so well.
But they still feel the same way. And on the north side, there is similar discussion. So, you know, creating some, it's their choice, and I'm not, I'm not putting a value statement on that. I'm just saying, as a planning director, if I'm asked to put dwelling units there and the property owners are not really interested in having high-density dwelling units on their property, that's a conflict that I can't solve. So this is the, the ultimate buildable lands inventory results. Anything that has hash marks on it is what we have identified as constrained. So you will see, ironically, it looks very similar to our UGB amendments. Oh, and I also wanted to point out, all that land that's up there on the north side all has development proposals on it today. So that all, that will all go away in terms of being developable. So in terms of numbers, we identified a total of 721 buildable acres in the city's UGB. Of those 61 are commercial, and we have a deficit in commercial, so we all agreed that we wouldn't count that as residential, because whether we count it residential or commercial, we're in a deficit position anyways. So we took that out. And then the residential plan designation, that's the rural residential exception lands that we brought in during the UGB amendment process. Those are tough to develop, and we're gonna talk through what that looks like. And then we also identified all the Zone 2 acreage, because now we need to understand to the jelly bean jars. We have to be locating this many people in different timeframes, three, five, 10, and 20 years. And if Zone 2 is not ready to go in 10 years, then I have to take that off the map and figure out how to get that third tier of homes built without it. And that's the housing strategy. These acres are actually Baker Creek North, which is in right now for a land use proposal, so those are no longer in the commission. So really, we're looking at in terms of near-term acreage to be able to build out for the next 10 years, these acres in the residential's areas that are on vacant lots that are in Zone 1. That's 179. And I will tell you, a lot of that is actually under development. So a lot of that acreage is, has subdivisions approved on them in the West Hills and Baker Creek West, which we just talked about, and then the remaining Shagwin Village buildout that the Rudeans are working on. So it includes that. So sometimes when we're doing this process, I feel like we're playing Monopoly, and we're not really talking about reality. When I, you know, as a planning director, I still have to think about those people and where they're gonna live and work and how this is gonna happen. And, you know, when we get into the sort of wonkiness of the Oregon land use system, I feel like there's a master banker with these deeds of property saying, develop this, develop that, without consideration of, you know, actually property owner willingness, what is occurring on the property, can we serve it? So it's tough. Oh, yeah, so that's the property. And then money. So interestingly, how much it costs doesn't really mean anything in terms of whether it's buildable. I mean, it does in the development world, but it doesn't in the land use system. So the, the West Hills, Zone 2, the water Zone 2, in that original round of the UGB process that the city eventually walked away from, staff spent a lot of time arguing, this doesn't make sense in this 20-year planning horizon because it doesn't have water service. But that didn't hold up, and it's, so it needed to be included, and we're still sitting on it in terms of that 20-year horizon. So I like Monopoly, but it doesn't solve our problem. We still need to figure out how to get that big bucket plus the little bucket into that And I don't know how to illustrate it any better than that. So if you go back to what we brought in as rural residential exception lands in the last process, and what we see today in terms of what's still in the UGB and hasn't been annexed into the city and the zoning associated with it, those are the lands that we're looking at in terms of where we can develop moving into the future, and let's talk about those a little bit. So this is Fox Ridge, which was section number two on that map. I've had three of the property owners from this area approach me and say, over my dead body, will this property ever come into the city and be developed? I'm very happy with my situation right now. So they're, they're not worried about Water Zone 2 not being readily available for them. This is Riverside Drive. So this is the section four that's just east of our industrial park, and this is where we have the most acreage. These are mostly two, five, and 10-acre lots. So these are mostly residential living. This is not a lot of active farming. And when I go and approach them and say, you know what? Look what you can be doing if you come into the city. Doesn't this look great? They're not excited about that. They, they're not interested in inviting 600 of their friends to come live with them on their 10-acre lot. And to illustrate this a little bit further, this is actually a piece of property. So they used to tell me there all the time it was over my dead body, but now one of them has decided to move. And, and so this is on the market right now. It is advertised as all the perks of country living within a five-minute drive of downtown McMinnville, which says it all. They have land, they live in a great spot, and they have all access to urban amenities. So why would they ever annex into the city? And to drive it a little bit further, if they do come into the city, unless they develop, they're paying a lot more money for their amenities that they already enjoy. So I took their house and my house, which are very similar, except for they have 10 times more acreage and land than I do, and sort of just scrolled through it to see, you know, what's the, what's the difference? Why would someone choose to live one place and not the other? And you can see from the levy rate, it's significantly different, though they're just living right outside the city boundaries. So they use the schools, they use everything, except for they have an out-of-district price tag on the community center and the library. So it's very difficult to take a situation like that and, and say to someone, you're a part of our 20-year buildable lands inventory, we're dependent upon you, and we really need to see six units per acre at a minimum, rather than your one unit per three acres. And by the way, this house is being purchased to remain as a single-family dwelling unit. So that's the residential buildable lands inventory and the challenges we have in front of us in terms of the housing needs analysis. Oh, yeah, so now we're back to Monopoly, and we're just figuring out how many homes to put where. But again, I am always reminding people, it's about not the plastic plain pieces, but the people in our future and where they're going to live. Because we can pretend that the, you know, deeds for the rural residential exception lands are gonna solve the problem, but if they're not solving the problem in reality, we still have to figure out how to solve the problem. So we put together planning horizons, and we did this based on the history of what's happened in McMinnville. It takes a lot of time to put this work together and submit it to the state. And a lot of people, when the city starts, like we started last year, will say, okay, our planning, our 20-year planning horizon is 2018 to 2038, 20 years from now. But it's gonna take us about four or five years to put the work together, we'll submit it, we'll spend another couple of years in the court system. So, you know, 10 years from now, we'll have something approved that's, we're, and we're already 10 years into the planning period, which is what happened to Bend. So we said, let's take it to the end of our data year. So the end of the data year is 2021 for us, so we're gonna start 2021. And our planning horizon, our 20-year planning horizon will be 2021 to 2041. But we also need to know what's happening in five and 10 years as well, because we don't have any land to build on, and we have to figure that out. And then by state law, you can plan for 50 years, a 50-year planning horizon, and our recommendation is, if we're gonna invest and do the work for this and have the conversation, let's be good stewards and take it out 50 years. So we all come to the, you know, to agreement on how the city's gonna grow over the next 50 years, do the proper analysis, and then we can, you know, invest that now and then invest in other good planning initiatives in the future and have this solved already. So what that means for us is, we did it from the population forecast, we divided it into the different sectors of years. As this is people, so 12,028 by 2067, that's what you have in front of you. And then we figured out how many people are gonna live in a household, so we can figure out how many homes we need, and that's based on historic trends. So in McMinnville, we're about 2.5 people per household, so we did the math and came up with the number of new housing units per each planning horizon, and that's what you see in front of you. We couldn't find a bowl big enough for the 11,000 homes, nor were we gonna, we figured out it was 50 pounds of jelly beans we'd have to buy, and we just didn't think that that made sense. So you don't have the 2067 horizon there. In terms of the population, so when we talk about housing and housing strategy, we have to, by state law, start talking about how are we gonna meet the needs of our future population? We need to understand who they are. So our population's been aging in McMinnville. I think we all realize that, the baby boomers are aging, and this is sort of the forecast over the next 46 years for our population. And it's, you know, we're gonna age and grow in our 60-plus years proportionately, but we're still going to have a good proportion of different types of age groups. So we're still gonna be serving families if we can do the planning correctly. We're becoming more diverse.
Heather, one, one more question back on that slide. I, I've been to a couple of seminars that talk about, you know, as the baby boomers are, are growing in number, their need for the bigger home may not be as prevalent as we've been, but there's a mindset that needs to be changing. We see millennials wanting to be smaller, but we have all these bigger homes. Can you give some thought around that?
Yeah, and the housing needs analysis goes into that discussion quite a bit, but there are trends, so all we can look at is trends and what people are forecasting, different groups are gonna want to do. So in terms of baby boomers, it is anticipated that they're going to want to downsize their properties in, in terms of maintenance as the empty nest. And so they'll be looking for downsizing the properties, but probably still looking for ownership opportunities. So they're, they are a homeowner-focused group. Millennials, interestingly, are also ownership-oriented, but they can't afford it. So they're, they're the generation that has less money than their previous generation for the first time in, in over 100 years, I guess. And so they are looking at smaller properties for that very reason, because they can't afford anything else, and they want, do want to get into ownership opportunities. It's also a lifestyle choice, too, that, there's a lot of discussion about that they're very urban, but I suspect when they move into a suburban environment like McMinnville, that they may be looking for something a little bit different than what they're experiencing in Portland, but they're still gonna be constrained by finances. And so we had a lot of discussion about they'd be looking for smaller home opportunities to own, rather than the, right now, the standard is like 2,200 square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath homes. So we expect to see the market changing to respond to smaller homes. That's the anticipation.
Does that mean smaller lot sizes, too?
It could. So that's, when we talk about the housing strategy, that's what came into play. So as a city of McMinnville, there's a lot of concern about expanding into, we're, we are literally surrounded by high-value farmland, except for those small sections of primary color that we saw. And so there's a lot of concern about that, and people don't want to expand too much into that. So there's a lot of conscientious and thoughtful dialogue about how do we have better land efficiencies based on what future needs are, but to the point where we're not putting people into living situations that are no longer quality of life, living situation, and it's finding the balance. And I'm not sure we have found that yet. We're also becoming more diverse, so this is interesting. We're growing, our Hispanic population is growing fairly significantly. We're seeing in our elementary schools 40 to 50% of population that's Latino. And so that's a, that's a different household lifestyle, and there's a lot of multigenerational living that happens in those households, too, which is a larger household. is a larger housing product. We're seeing a lot more, more one, two person households and people feeling comfortable with that. And then income, we project income will continue to be lower than the county. So McMinnville will continue to have lower incomes, and that will be part of our strategy in terms of how do we get people into ownership opportunities with lower incomes, and what does that mean from a housing perspective? So the trends, which were the implications for our housing needs, was that we expect there is going to be an increased demand for smaller, single family dwelling unit homes. People are still going to want sort of their place. We do expect there to be a wider range of housing types. So we don't think the classic, single family dwelling unit, three bed, two bath, 2,200 square foot home, and then a town home and apartment complex are going to be the three housing products in a city. We do think there's going to be a lot of other housing products, like cottage clusters and tiny homes and things of that nature. We do think that we're going to need to think about multi generational housing, and what does that look like? And then housing that's in walkable neighborhoods near services. So people now have the opportunity to choose where they live, and McMinnville's got a great quality of life. But in terms of our neighborhoods, we don't have walkable neighborhoods. We don't have, we don't have centralized commercial services in our different neighborhoods. We don't have infrastructure that really supports and encourages biking and walking. So those are things we're going to want to think about over the next 20 years as we do some more planning. We have to, by state law, look at housing mix, and it's defined in the law, how we look at it, which I think is a little archaic, because we're looking backward and not forward. But we talk about single family detached housing, we talk about single family attached housing and multifamily. So in those definitions, detached is what you think it is, but it includes manufactured and mobile homes, attached is town homes, and multifamily are twos and up. Duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and apartments. So the housing mix in McMinnville historically has been what you see there. We have in the 2000 census and the 2013, 2017 census, which was our most recent data when we collected this, show that we hover in the high 60s for single family detached housing in terms of our overall product. But we've been working through our building permits and our housing efficiencies and land efficiencies to try and get higher density. And so if you look at the permits that were issued between 2000 and 2018, we moved that number a little bit in that cohort of data. It didn't move the overall number significantly, but we're moving in that direction. And this shows what that looks like. What's interesting to me here is that the homeownership versus rental proportionalities. So the homeowner is still in a very much a single family detached position, that that's what they're looking for. And we have very limited attached product that is in ownership, and we hear that from our developers. So we actually have more single family attached product than most communities in our comparable. But from our developer, because we have asked for it a lot of times in our planned developments, but our developers all tell us that they have a hard time selling that, and they end up managing it as rentals. And then we, most of our multifamily is in a rental position. So we don't have a lot of high end condo multifamily products in McMinnville, which may be something to look at with the baby boomer population. This shows our bridling permits. This says two things. Look at all the multifamily we were issuing back in the day, and how many permits we were issuing back in the day. And then it clearly shows the drop off there for the last 10 years. So that's the deficit position. And then we also, we identified where this sits in terms of our different zones. So we wanted to understand, what does this mean in terms of density in our zones? Some of the takeaway from this for me is our C3 zone has much higher density in terms of housing, because we only allow apartments in our C3 zone. In our R4 zone, I showed you those communities that were a high density residential zone, but they're historic, single family neighborhoods, and they don't want high density there. So our density in our high density residential zones is fairly low, at 7.9 units per acre. That's in some communities, that's their low density targets. We have to identify what we expect will be redevelopment potential. So existing lands that are already developed, how they will redevelop into higher density and infill. So we looked at that and went through a process. This is where we had discussions about accessory dwelling units and things of that nature. And we decided to pick a number of 8%. There wasn't a lot of science behind this choice, which is concerning to me. It only equates to 422 units in the grand scheme of things, in terms of those 5,000 units that we're striving for. But again, it, you know, we have a lot of reluctant property owners to redevelop and partition their lots, so it'll be interesting to see how we go with that. And then we looked at a future housing mix, and we talked a lot about this. We brought two scenarios to the group. We wanted to have them consider still striving for higher density so that we could protect the farmland. And they chose scenario option two, which is going into a scenario of 55% single family detached housing, 12% attached, and 33% multifamily. That's significantly different than what we're at today, and that's significantly different than what our permits are that we're issuing today. So that is a fairly aggressive target, in my opinion. And then we calculated what that means across the board. So how do you apply that? And we took out the redevelopment potential, and then identified how many new dwelling units we should be issuing per year. So in my world, this is great, because I can figure out if we're on target for growth in terms of our new dwelling units and what we're issuing or not, so we don't get in a deficit position. So it looks like we should be issuing about 220 dwelling permits per year. I can tell you, in this last year, we issued close to 300, because we worked really hard to get a lot of multifamily into the city. So we wanted to compare these decisions. This is the committee. The committee, we have a stakeholder committee comprised of citizens and leaders who voted on this and made the recommendation. It then comes to you as city council. You give us direction if you want us to take this out. My recommendation is, we would take it out into the public and say, this is, what's come out of this effort? What do you think? Does this feel good, not good? And in about a year's time, after a public dialogue, we would bring it back to the city council for consideration through a public process with a planning commission. But we need something to bring out. So this is the recommendation to bring out to the community. So to give you some perspective on it, in terms of what it means from past efforts, the first effort for a UGB amendment, they had a split of 66% single family dwelling and 34% multifamily, so they didn't have any attached in that. And then in the 2003, 2023 effort that was not successful, they had a 60, 12, 28 split. And then they identified 50 units for redevelopment over that 20 year time period. To put it in perspective with other communities, Newburgh has just gone through the same process. So if they haven't shown it to you, I will. They have a split that they've come up with of 68 and 32 on 120 units for redevelopment. Redmond just went through it, too. So just went through, it means they're in the same exact timeframe we are. 60, 15, and 25 with 146 units of redevelopment. Grants Pass did it a few years ago, 67, 8, and 25. So we are more aggressive than all three of those communities. Corvallis is going, just went through it, I think, right, 2016, they adopted this? 56 and 44. So they're, that's a, that's a big flag in the sand. And I think they feel that they're comfortable doing that, because they are a big university town, so they have a lot of dormitories. And then Bend is a 55, 10, 35. So Bend's flag in the sand is very similar to ours. And I will suggest to you that that's, that's pretty, that's on, that's on the spectrum of the overall targets. So then we had to figure out, how do we create a housing strategy that achieves that? We're going to, we're going to shift quite a bit. We're going to change the paradigm of McMinnville in terms of how we live. How do we create a strategy that looks at that? And, you know, playing again with the plastic housing pieces, what does it look like to ensure that we're building something that serves people and not just stacking and packing homes on land? So we could do this. This is the Bronx projects. I've shared this with you before. I drove by this every day when I was in college, thinking I need to be a planner. Never seen this, but I think this would be pretty cool. This is Hong Kong, which is the highest density housing ever built. We would solve all of our problems with this, or maybe, or maybe create a lot more. But planning, to me, it is all about connecting people and, in terms of the way they live. So it's not just homes, it's parks, and it's trails, and it's bike ped activities, and it's places where people can interact, and it's backyards where you can have friends over and grill, you know, it's all of that. It's not just stacking and packing and warehousing people. So we need to be cognizant of that as we put this together. So our big challenge is, how do we protect the small town charm and aesthetic of McMinnville while providing housing choice? Because we want to ensure everyone has an opportunity to choose how they live for our diverse community that's growing, and ensure that everyone lives in a quality housing situation. This was our goal that we put on the table for ourselves when we were doing our strategy work. First thing we did as a city was the Great Neighborhood Principles, so we wouldn't lose track of building great neighborhoods. In that, we have three principles that really fit into this strategy, which is housing for diverse incomes. So every neighborhood will have a variety of housing that's serving diverse incomes, rather than segregating everyone of a lower income into the Bronx projects and the wealthy neighborhood, the north and south side of the tracks. We also thought that every neighborhood should have a variety of housing types. So, and we do that here in McMinnville already with our planned development. So we have town homes and apartments and single family dwelling units in a lot of our neighborhoods, very successfully. And then a big thing that came out was human scale design. So what this means is, as we continue to grow, we want to grow in a very conscientious way that's creating density, but also still intimate, still gentle, still feels human scale as a community. And building neighborhoods rather than stacking and packing people. So when we started looking at housing types, one thing that's unique for McMinnville that Tom discovered, and Tom, Tom's so good at his due diligence and research and data. He comes up with stuff where I'm just like, whoa. But, so he was looking at our comparables, and in our single family detached housing product, 13% of those are manufactured homes. And that's a fairly large percentage for a community. It's what, twice the norm? Yeah. And so already in McMinnville, we're serving, we're providing housing choice for people in terms of different incomes to have ownership opportunities and to live in single family detached products. So there's always this age old assumption that if you can't afford higher end housing, you need to live in an apartment. And apartments are cheaper, so they'll be more affordable. And to me, what we're saying is, if you don't have enough income, you don't have a choice about where you live, this is where you're living. And if you do have income, you can choose to live in all these other places. We don't want to do that. We want to make sure that people have a choice about their living situation, so they're not just feeling like they're warehoused somewhere. And already, we're doing that in McMinnville in terms of our traditional product here. So that was an aha moment for us, where we thought, we can look at this differently. We can say, we don't have to put all of our lower income population into apartments. We can look at other ways of housing them, so that they have choices. And so we have to identify how we're going to meet the needs of all these future people. So we created a chart that identified the number of households and homes we needed in the different income levels of the forecast. And then we sat down and talked about it and said, what does that mean in terms of what people can do? Can we get them into single family detached housing if they're at the 30% or less of median income? Because that's typically subsidized housing, affordable housing, and that's typically apartments. But we thought, you know, tiny home villages just give people an opportunity for some independence and ownership. And mobile homes and manufactured homes, there's all sorts of different ways to look at this. So we created this chart to just sort of say, the traditional approach doesn't necessarily, isn't always necessarily the right approach. And in Oregon, we're learning it's not, because we have an affordable housing crisis, and we've always thought multifamily is affordable housing. In a lot of communities, it's not. It's multifamily is a choice for many people, and there's a lot of high end apartment complexes. So there's different ways to sort of cut this up, and we wanted to make sure that our, our program was supporting that and allowing those opportunities to occur. So after identifying that, we said, does it make sense, the traditional approach that we have right now for zoning? We have four residential zones, low, medium, high. We, and, you know, and then we have commercial zones. And we were like, should we look at this a little bit differently? At the same time, House Bill 2001 was rolling through the legislative session, and we were in conversation with them, too. So we brought some other opportunities to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee. We said, you know, we could look at a catchall residential zone, and that's where you have all these diverse housing types, and it falls into our Great Neighborhood Principles that we're trying to achieve. And we could do a high density residential zone, because we just showed the commercial zone has great density targets. So not allow single family homes and high density residential, and just really look at that. And then we can maintain the single family residential zoning. And we illustrated what that would look like for people in terms of the zoning product. If you put it all just in one high rise residential zone, your need, you're really sort of creating this anomaly in your community. But there's ways where you can distribute the density across the board. So in the end, the committee decided to go with the hybrid, which is this catchall residential zone with a high density residential zone. So I, option three. And the strategy is built across that. So that would be two residential zones. And what it looks at, it looks at more than just sort of the, I call it the Neapolitan ice cream zoning, where you just sort of create the colors and that's what you can build. And we look at more at master planning. How do we create neighborhoods and bring these different diverse housing types together? And really do it based on form based. So are people concerned about what things look like more than, you know, who's living in it? And that's a history in McMinnville. There's a lot of planned developments here. Everything colored on that map is a planned development, which usually is a variety of different housing types. So it's bringing the tradition forward and really codifying it. So what that meant to us as a team is, we started talking about it, I think, at the planning commission, a lot of things we hear are relative to impact in terms of aesthetics and curb appeal, and what does this look like in our neighborhood? And so we felt like we could start introducing the discussion of duplexes and triplexes in the single family residential zones, if they look like single family residential homes, and they have a duplex in them or a triplex. I mean, that's how they were built in the old days, if you think about it. And so we really started thinking about, what does that look like from a design standard? Because no one, you know, driving down the street, you may or may not even know, unless you count the doors on the home, how many units are in there, based on what it looks like. And that's the human scale piece. So what this means for the city is, in terms of the strategy, is a commitment to a higher density housing strategy. And my question is, are we ready for that? I can tell you, as planning staff, we sit at planning commission meetings, and every new residential development has significant opposition. And if it's higher density, it really has significant opposition. So it's a question of, is this community ready for that type of strategy? But also understanding the consequences if we don't go there. It's a paradigm shift in zoning from sort of this homogenous, single family residential zones to really neighborhoods that are more inclusive and diverse with a variety of housing types. And we heard people want that when we went through the Great Neighborhood Principle process. And now, by law, we have to do that. And then, because House Bill 2001 did pass. And then it's a high density residential zone strategically located, and the question is where? So we're testing this concept. This came up through this process, and we were like, okay, where would that be located? Because where we have R4 right now, people don't want it, but it makes sense. And so we're like, where would this community really accept that? So we started doing the city center housing strategy discussion and trying to leverage urban renewal funds to make something happen, things like that. But even in those dialogues, we're struggling with a discussion of density as well. I think some counselors, we're here at a meeting where we spent an hour talking about ADUs as sort of the solution for high density housing in the city center. And if we're really talking about high density housing, it is high density housing that we're talking about. And we'd have to identify where that would be located that this community can support. And then, but what it does mean is it's, we're talking about a growth analysis that's built around McMinnville values. This is coming from the stakeholder committee. It was very thoughtful discussions. We'll put it out into the community and get their response. And it's really thinking about what's best for our future residents in terms of lifestyle here. So we're back to the age old question of how do we put all of those jelly beans into our existing buildable lands inventory? And after going through the work, it looks like we need an urban growth boundary expansion. So even with high efficiency standards for land use and with a commitment to a higher density housing strategy, there is still need for expansion. And so we're looking at that and trying to figure out what that means. And what do the additional exception lands mean? If we bring those in for the high, for the UGB expansion, will they really develop? I think of exception lands as redevelopment properties because people are experiencing those lands and not farming them. They're sorry, something happening. So they have to make a conscientious decision to change their lifestyle and redevelop their properties. So there's a lot of concern about growth into outside the city. We even heard it in our committee levels. One, can we do that? We've heard legally, you can't grow, no, McMinnville can grow. In fact, it's, we're supposed to look at that mandate by state law. And, and I would say, to put in perspective, the population has grown by over 226%. Our UGB has grown by seven. We've done a lot of efficiency standards here and we have really tried to use land efficiently. We've been working on expanding our UGB for 25 years. So, you know, our planning horizon, Yamhill County has 458,240 acres in it. McMinnville's UGB currently is 7,552 acres. That's less than 2% of the county in geographic area. But we carry 31% of the population. That's a great number for Oregon land use.
Before we get too much further, can you give me the numbers again for the 226% versus the 700, or sorry, the 7%, the very high point there? What are the? When I saw the, the number that you gave me, but you gave me the raw data too, it was more like 100%.
Yeah, I might have done that wrong. Because it, because, so it's more than double than population. So maybe it translated in percentages wrong in my math.
I just want to make sure that when Tom Henderson reports that, he's right behind you.
So Tom.
100% versus.
It more than doubled in population.
And that would be 100%. But the UGB in that same time period is only expanded by 7%.
Yeah, and that number is actually conservative. I did look at that several times because I knew I'd be tested on that one.
There you go, you passed.
I think I got the, no, I think I got the population number wrong though, in terms of percentages.
Just the percentage, I think you got the number, the wrong number is right.
The wrong number, I think, if I recall, was 15,510 to 3,3810, something like that.
Yeah.
It's on the slide. But thank you for pointing that out so that I don't get challenged in the newspaper.
You got a little bit of a smile too. Okay, you were at the.
And I think what I'm going to do is put approximately in front of all of these. I am not a mathematician, but I'm just trying to show a perspective.
You're doing great.
So with that, I believe, this is the number we got from county staff about a year ago. So this could be more or less right or wrong too. That Yamhill County has about 192,000 EFU acres. If the city expanded by 800, I'm just pulling numbers out. This is, there's no test to this, acres into EFU land. So no exception lands, which we actually can't do. We have to go into exception lands. The city would be absorbing 0.4% of the Yamhill County EFU land. So it's just to sort of show that when we talk about an expansion, what's the impact to existing farmland to be able to absorb that type of growth? And if McMinnville's not absorbing it, right now it's showing it's going into the unincorporated county. So in terms of next steps, what's underway right now? We have the, we just went through the housing stuff. We're doing the employment stuff. So same analysis, we'll do jobs, density per acre, how much land need there is. We'll look at parks and public facilities and things of that nature. So if you have public facility planning going on relative to McMinnville, let me know. So we can make sure we include that. We're looking at the city center housing strategy. And we are underway with form based residential design standards to respond to the House bill in our catchall residential zone. We want to make sure in the urbanization study that we're really being thoughtful about master planning for McMinnville and not just saying, let's make our expansion as little as possible. I have heard this discussion and have no new parkland. But if we're putting people in smaller lots with no backyards, the kids need somewhere to play. So we need to be conscientious of that. And then we also have a great opportunity to look at greenways along the Yamhill River, which has been in our comprehensive plan for 20 years. We'll have to, transportation network to support higher density is going to be a tough one in McMinnville because we already have fairly skinny transportation efficiency standards here and a lot of congestion. And so if we want to move people around the community in a higher density way, we should be looking at bike ped trails in terms of transportation network and really creating connectivity there. So we need to plan for that.
And Heather, you know, as we've been meeting with individuals out on that three mile lane, there's, there's a overwhelming number that really want that to happen, to feel like they're a part of the city in some form or fashion.
Yeah, and if they can get on their bike and ride downtown, which is only a mile away rather than drive, that's great for everyone.
Or the connection to Joe Dampier Park.
Yeah.
If we come up with some type of solution.
So in terms of next steps, and I promise we're close. We came to you a couple of months ago as a city council and, and asked the question of, we'd like to move forward with an urban reserve area as a tool for urban growth planning. That's the 50 year growth planning. And so we would like to move forward, you gave us direction that you thought that we should consider that. We've been working on it. We've been working with legal counsel on whether McMinnville can do that. We feel we can and we're making the recommendation that we do. And so we would initiate that fair, here fairly shortly, the initiate the urban reserve area planning. What that would look like is we would look at infrastructure planning for lands within a mile of the UGB. So we just start looking at, does it make sense? Can we serve it? Can we run pipes? Can, where are the barriers, that type of stuff? And then go through the same analysis for need. And we did that and we're doing it through all the other analysis too, for that 2067 planning horizon. And then go through the same sort of land analysis in terms of priorities. So it doesn't circumvent any discussion about high value farmland versus exception land. You still have to go through the goal 14 locational analysis. You're just doing it on a 50 year planning horizon. And then you're doing infrastructure planning for the 50 years. And what it means for a city is if you're going to build an interceptor, so a big pipe in the ground for water or wastewater, you build it big enough in your central so it can serve 50 years out on the, in terms of the spider web. So you don't have to dig it up and put a bigger one in later. Then we would do urban growth boundary analysis. So we would pull the 20 years out of that 50 years. And we would do a framework plan for that. We do specific facility planning. So, you know, getting from the 20,000 foot level of infrastructure planning down to 5,000 and then do area plans and annexation. And so what that looks like really quickly is we draw a circle around this existing UGB and to look at all the land. I'm pulling some stuff from Redmond because this is what we did in Redmond and won a lot of state awards for it. But it's been a great program there. So for the urban reserve area, we then thought about what would be the long term central, you know, planning areas in that 50 year planning horizon so that we could identify the big transportation and infrastructure needs. And then you, you can, it's hard to see, there should be a little black line around that. Oh, there we go. And then you follow up with the UGB amendment. So let's pretend the white lines, the URA, urban reserve area. Then you say, where does it make sense to invest in infrastructure first and bring in that 20 year planning horizon? And then if we do that, then we can do an area plan for the UGB and get a little bit deeper. Where are the neighborhoods? Where do we put, need to put neighborhood serving commercial, those types of things? Where are future schools going to go? And that, from there, we do area plans. So we take a couple hundred acres and we master plan it. And then we can connect everything. So I often hear from people, I really don't like what's happening with the subdivisions, Baker Creek and Hill Road. I really wish we had gone back to the old master plan that didn't get approved. And I'm like, yes, the master planning is good because it connects everything together. And we can do that through our process. And then the developer comes in and they just build to the master plan. It's a fairly simple process. The infrastructure planning that you need to know is fairly intense and includes a wastewater master. And we do this in concert with the county because now we're impacting county lands. And that's why it's important to have the, the discussion with the county commissioners and county staff. But we would do a wastewater master plan, a transportation system plan update, a parks master plan, water master plan, public facilities plan, schools, utilities and natural resources. We need to do that for 20 years and 50 years. That's a lot of planning. We also need to do, since we are having a higher density housing strategy, we need to identify whether our existing infrastructure within the city limits can accommodate higher density. And I can tell you, our wastewater system can't. So there will be significant investments in the wastewater system to support a higher density housing strategy. We will be pulling pipes up that are in the ground and making them bigger. And so we need to look at that and understand what that means. So the challenge is we need to maintain a small town charm as we grow to 63,000 people. We need to push a high density product in a town that's fairly resistant to it. We need to look at how to bring this much housing into a city which, where it will be a lot of infill occurring, which is hard to master plan and hard to ensure you're creating those great neighborhood principles. And we'd like to have the plans in place by June 2021. I, that's my flag in the sand. I'm not saying we're going to do that. I think it will be in 2022. But to do it, it's going to take money and it's going to take dedication of time of the planning team. Focused time. And we always have looming over our head, someone who has a go to jail card. So that's the appeal process. Do not pass go. And we don't have a community chest of funds to make this happen. So even though we're feeling like we're playing Monopoly, we just don't, we don't have all the tools of Monopoly to do it. I do think a community dialogue is what we would recommend as the next step. Talking about this with everyone, getting people involved, doing community visioning. And then coordinating with the county. So the coordination with the county is we, we will be coordinating comprehensive plan amendments, zone map amendments. We'll be discussing, I'd like to discuss, and kind of I've talked very briefly about this, but I think we're in agreement, some sort of urban holding zone for the UGB lands that are in the county but not in the city yet. So we can manage growth there appropriately. So it makes sense as it comes in. And then updating our joint land management agreement. That will be, all be part of this process. So that means it will come to both city council for decision making and county commissioners for decision making. And that is, concludes our discussion.
Thank you, Heather. I've had a request that we maybe take five minutes and just stand up, restroom break, and then we'll be back. Let's say at five after seven for our discussion and questions that we may have specifically. But again, thank you so very much.